Good evening and welcome to July, the, excuse me, the July 21st, 2015, meeting of the Yukon City Council. If you would stand at this time for the invocation by Councilwoman Erlene Smaistrela and remain standing for the flag salute please.
Bow your heads please. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for all the blessings you've given us. The city of Yukon, we are so thankful for what you do for us. Please guide us down the right road in order to make our city a better place to live. In your precious name, we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll please. Here.
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 First section of the meeting are the presentations and proclamations. There are none this evening, sir?
None this evening.
Thank you. The next section is the visitors' section. That's an opportunity for people to address the council about a non-agenda item. If there is anyone here that would like to address the council about a non-agenda item, they can come forward at this time and address the council. Visitors, seen none. At this time, we will recess as the Yukon City Council and reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A is the YMA consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority by unanimous consent can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve: A) the minutes of the regular meeting of July the 7th, 2015; and B) the payment of material claims in the amount of $9,739.29. Do I have a motion?
Shall move.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll please.
Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smaistrela?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
The next item is 2A. Discuss, consider, and take possible action on the attached petition for annexation of the northeast quarter and part of the northwest quarter of Section 24, Town 12 North, Range 6 West, Canadian County, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll please.
Smaistrela?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
At this time, we'll adjourn as YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. The first item on the agenda is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council by unanimous consent can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. City manager recommends a motion that will approve: A) the minutes of the regular meeting of July the 7th, 2015; B) the payment of material claims in the amount of $545,698.15; C) the designation of the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorize their sale, donation, or trade; and D) setting the date for the next regular council meeting for August the 4th, 2015, 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South 5th Street in Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion?
Shall move.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smaistrela?
Yes.
The next item is item 2, and that's the reports of boards, commissions, and city officials. The executive director's fourth quarter report from the Yukon Economic Development Authority. Chairman Wright.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name's Ray Wright. I'm the chairman of the Yukon Economic Development Authority. And on behalf of the authority and Larry Mitchell, our executive director, wanted to come up and just briefly go over the report, the annual report with everybody. You've had it in your packet, so I'm not going to go over it word by word. But I would like to hit a couple of highlights if you don't mind. We've made pretty good progress over the last couple of years with the Development Authority. I guess we started with the Tiff District, as everybody knows, and that's done real well. The financial report is on Exhibit 1 in your packet. And it just kind of shows that for the last quarter, we took in $51,000 approximately for a yearly revenue of $202,191.71. Our budget for next year is $252,000. I guess in a way, that doesn't sound like a whole lot compared to the city's budget. That's quite a bit, and a good start for the Tiff District. That's just everything that's only in the Tiff area that's new since we started the district. So when you look at that, that's really, really good for us. Some of the expenditures, as you know, obviously, operating expenditures, and we've done a lot of promoting of Yukon and the surrounding areas and all the commercial areas. We have a road that's out there. It's nearing completion. It's looking really nice. I was out there this morning, and they're backfilling a lot of the curbs, and they're working on the actual roundabout currently. And we're excited about that. It's, the information particulars on the costs and things like that, the... They're all in your packet. We've also got a couple of other things planned is the I-40 Frisco interchange. So that's in your packet, the monies that we would have to raise for that. So as we go on and continue to collect money from the Tiff areas, and as we get more and more stores in those areas, those monies will be coming in and to pay for those items. The second thing I want to talk to you about is the adoption of the urban gateway smart code. As you know, you all passed that March 17th. I was a little bit leery of that at first, obviously. Things you don't know about, you kind of fear. After getting more and more into it and hearing more and more about regional and national developments, more and more cities are going to this, more and more developers are going to this, and more retailers are asking for this. So not only is it coming from the public, that they want nicer areas where they can walk and congregate and things like that, but the retailers are also getting on board with this. And when the group went to Las Vegas to the convention out there, that it was kind of the buzz out there. A lot of it, you know, as you know, is fads. We went from indoor malls to strip malls to different things. And this is the newest, and I think the adoption of the gateway code put us well ahead of the curve and positions Yukon at the forefront of new, very progressive development and the best retailers. So we're real excited about that. We did apply for economic adjustment grant. Unfortunately, we learned in late April that the grant was denied. There was only one in our region that was granted, and so we didn't get that grant. But we are looking at other grants. They're doing a hotel conference center feasibility study, which I guess is, Mr. Grayson, that's ongoing?
Yes, it's ongoing, underway.
Yeah. We did a Yukon community analysis in April. Very interesting. Grayson is aware of other large groups that have done one of these, and it's kind of interesting to me to see that the city's community analysis kind of mirrors the other ones that have been done. We're reaching into Oklahoma City to the east, which surprised me. We're reaching all the way to the state line out west. It's kind of a cone shape. It kind of starts small and then gets real big north and south, and comes back in towards Yukon. So our trade area is really, really expanding. Really excited about that. People are coming to Yukon from all over western Oklahoma. And now, we're seeing the trend that people in Oklahoma City are coming this way. So that's a wonderful trend. Design theme for the Health Center Parkway. We have contracted with a group, and Grayson, you might...
Butts or Gardner?
Butts and Gardner. And they're looking at possible something for the center of the roundabout out west of the hospital. We felt that needed something to set Yukon, just to set it, not really set it apart, but to set the tone for out there and to give a theme and also support the arts and things like that. So we don't know what that's going to be yet, but at least we have something to look forward to that it's going to be really beautiful out there. I don't know if it's going to be a fountain, if it's going to be a piece of art. Don't know what it's going to be, but we have contracted with people that are going to lead us in the right direction. We also appointed a new trustee with the departure of Ken. We have appointed Michael McCarron, Councilman McCarron, to fill in, and he's made the last couple of meetings since he's been appointed, and is going to be a good addition to the group. We continue on. The things that I talked about have been in your handouts. We've got Exhibit 1 is the financials. Exhibit 2 is all the demographics and the community study. And that included a, I can't think of the word I want to use, the retail, what we needed for retail out here.
Gap analysis.
So, gap analysis, so that we don't get more of the same businesses. And so we're hopeful that we'll identify businesses that we're lacking in Yukon, and we can pinpoint and go after those type of retailers. So all these things are really good. The city's been great to work with. We've tried to keep a real positive, forward-thinking momentum with our group, and I think that's going to continue on. Nothing but good things in the future, I think, and we're all excited about it. The whole group is, and we hope that we transfer that excitement on to you all. So if there are any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them, or...
Any questions? Questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you, Ray.
Next item is item 3, and that's consider approving the permanent easement for the new city of Yukon sign on Route 66 for an electrical line easement as recommended by the city attorney. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smaistrela?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Item 4 is consider approving the renewal of the existing radio systems license agreement with the city of Oklahoma City for the term of July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016, and approval of amendment to the agreement implementing a 3% increase in radio usage fees beginning July 1, 2016, with an additional 3% increase in fees each year thereafter. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
I just, we, this is going to continue on now as a 3% every year for the duration? Is that really what we're saying here?
That's correct. We will analyze it in a few years to see when, at what point does it make sense to create our own communication system and not operate off the Oklahoma City system. At some point, at 3% a year, there's got to be, there's got to be a time when the cost...
Ten years downstream, it gets pretty expensive.
Exactly. So we'll continue to analyze that moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Because that was my question with the 3%. It goes up fairly quickly. But also, help me understand, I know that we're only supposed to be signing one-year contracts, and I know this is right, but help me to understand how we're able to do this, make this agreement for more than a year.
This agreement is for a year.
That's right. It's for one year, automatically renewable without notice. We can give them 30 days' notice and be out. But at the end of 30 days, we've got to have our own system in place.
But the, what we're passing is something that's automatically going to renew itself?
We're renewing the existing contract, ratifying the existing contract for this fiscal year.
Yes, sir. But next year, without that, we're having a perpetual agreement that continues to go forward and renew it. The way that I read this, this thing will automatically renew itself and automatically increase itself by 3% every year going forward.
Unless we terminate.
Unless we terminate, and we're only talking about the increase, not the agreement itself.
Then I'm confused.
Yeah, me too.
So we'll have to renew the contract each year.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, then...
But we know what...
They're putting us on notice that if we renew for 2016, 2017, that it's going to be at a 3% increase. If we renew for 17, 18, then there's going to be an additional 3% compounded on top of that.
Okay, so this council tonight is not obligating any future council to continue to increase this at 3%?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for helping me make sure that we were...
Keep you out of jail.
Pardon my confusion. Thank you. Any other?
Yeah, I guess for me then, it's just, and I'll try to guess, clarify it in my own mind, but I guess what that means to me is, is that we can anticipate a 3% increase every year that we renew the contract. Is that correct? And if we do not renew it, then it's a, we have, what, 30 days to terminate and have something else in place, is that...
We would anticipate far in advance of 30 days and be prepared, but...
When we notify them, we're going to...
Hold on, everybody allow everybody to talk, so just go ahead.
Yeah, when we, when, at the end of it then, when we terminate, we may already have something in place, but that we would know that, you know, that it's 3% every year that we choose to continue. I guess that's what we're saying.
I think Oklahoma City has said that if you guys are going to continue to go forward, you need to anticipate that this contract is going to go up by 3%. Is that right?
That's right.
Yeah, every year, yeah.
And we're not obligated ourselves any further than this year by this?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay. Any other discussion, ladies? Call the roll please.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smaistrela?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is item 5, and that's consider approving the preliminary plat for attractive land being a part of Lot 1, Lot 19, Canadian Heights, 6th Edition, Popeye's Restaurant, and recommending, as recommended, excuse me, by the planning commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll please.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smaistrela?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
The next item is item 6, and that's consider approving the preliminary plat for attractive land situated within a portion of the northeast quarter of Section 16 Township 12 North, Range 5 West of the Indian Meridian in Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, River Mesa 2, as recommended by the planning commission. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll please.
Smaistrela?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes. Item 7 is consider accepting the public improvements for the utility easement on the public water line and fire hydrant that will serve Reno... Precinius Medical Center, as recommended by the Director of the Development Services. Please. Do I have a motion?
Shall move.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smaistrela?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Item made is consider accepting the public water line, fire hydrant, and placing the maintenance bond into effect to serve the Reno Precinius Medical Center as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion?
Shall move.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll please.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smaistrela?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Item 9 is consider approving ordinance number 1322, an ordinance which provides amendment to the Code of Ordinances of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma by deleting Appendix B, Section 504, creating a new zoning district, which shall be referred to as RR Rural Residential, and mending certain sections regarding rural street utilities in the city of Yukon, zoning ordinances, and adopting sections pertaining to the RR District, setting aside a highlight, highlight regulations, permanent use, minimum lot area, and with requirement and regulating lots in rural districts providing for severability and declaring an emergency. I don't think I could have messed that up anymore. Mr. Sigler, will that work?
That'll work fine.
Thank you. I was like that railroad thing and sit without the Rs. Do I have a motion? Please help me.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, ma'am. Second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Discussion, gentlemen? Ladies, discussion?
Somebody want to tell us exactly all, somebody else, what that means?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, just for...
Mr. Bottom?
Mitchell, you might as well head on up this way.
Oh, I thought some other people might not know what it is.
The, this was, Erlene, probably the subject of a study session maybe two, three weeks before you came on council.
Well, I've been advised of it since then, but I just thought maybe someone else may not out there know what it is, so thank you.
What we're proposing is a rural residential estate or a rural residential subdivision, basically, that would be normally north of the river, the North Canadian River, and west of Shell Creek. And what we're proposing is one-acre type lots or larger. This also includes water wells and have to have water wells, septic or sewage disposal. It talks a little bit about the uses that are allowed in the rural residential ordinance. We tried to make it as simple as we could. When we first started, we got this ordinance that was very, very cumbersome, and we pared it down with the city attorney, Mike Sigler's, help to something that's real easy, straightforward in development. It's basically, they're going to bring a plat to us like they would a regular subdivision and give us utility easements, and they have a certain requirement for a street improvement in there that they have to meet. So we have had several requests for these type of developments, so... And we think it's probably the best thing, when we get out in these rural areas, to allow them to meet certain requirements to be able to develop.
And we limited them to 100 chickens each.
Well...
And, but this allows the city to take over the maintenance of the road also?
The road only, that's correct.
Okay.
There was, I guess there was one piece in there, the only, I'm very much for the, for the improvement that ended up. But the only thing that concerned me was that out there where if we ever run sewers out to them, that we automatically, within 90 days, require them to have a, to hook up to our sewage system.
Well, there is a distance that they come into that they would have to bring those improvements there. But mostly developments, we're probably never, well, probably in the next 10, 15, 20 years, there probably not going to be a sewer available for them. Water may be a different issue going west on 66, so we basically, in the ordinance currently, if it's not within one-quarter of a mile of a water sewer, the city engineer can make that determination, and then they would have to, you know, put a water well in or a other type device for the waste disposal.
Yeah, the only thing I saw coming in was if they had put something in, were there for a very short period of time, and then we mandated that they hook up to our services, you know, and then they would lose whatever money they had put into that. But I can't see that happening very quickly.
No, no. And we have had that before in the past.
We have, I'm sorry, what?
We have had that in the past, where we had to do a district, a sewer district, to get sewer to lots that put a septic tank in. There is ways to get there, but it'd be on, or borne by the people that own the land.
Yeah, but you don't see that, you don't see big sewer lines and everything running out in those areas right now.
Not as of today, you know. Five years, 10 years makes a difference, but not today.
Okay. Thank you, Mitchell.
Other questions? Thank you, sir. Call the roll please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smaistrela?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Item 9I-A is consider removing the emergency clause of ordinance number 1322.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll please.
Smaistrela?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes. Next item is 10. That's consider approving an expenditure of funds in the amount of $29,715.84 for the purchase of 462 poly cart trash bins to be paid from the capital improvements budget as recommended by the Sanitations Service Director. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smaistrela?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Next item is 11. That's consider approval of the Fifth Amendment and ratification of the employment agreement for the city manager.
Motion to approve.
The second?
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll please.
Smaistrela?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes. Next item is 12, and that is the city manager's report information items only. Mr. Bottom?
To set the stage for this just slightly, the, I had agonized along with J.I. concerning the projection, the forecasting of revenues dating back to March and April when we began the budgeting process. And I really, after looking at the reports that had been printed and published from Oklahoma City University, visiting with the economics department at OU and OSU, visiting with the head economists at the Federal Reserve Bank in Oklahoma City, I finally decided that 3% was an appropriate number. Right after that occurred, we proceeded to have double-digit increases in sales tax for the last three months of fiscal year 15. And we finished the year at a 7.61% increase on sales tax. Then, all of a sudden, we get the sales tax report for the first reporting period of this fiscal year, and sales tax increased 12.72%. At the City Managers Association Conference in Claremore last week, I can assure you that we may have been the single-only town there with a double-digit increase, and very few got above 1 or 2% of an increase at all. Also, when it comes to use tax, you would think that we had a hailstorm and that we had a bunch of roofers in town, because use tax was up 255.69%. We talked about volatility in the use tax. This is an example, because last year, use tax was down 95%. This month, it's up 255%. So that's another reason why we don't budget use tax, because you can't tell where it's going to be. Of all the taxes that we collect, there was only one tax that showed a downturn. That was excise tax, and it was down by 1.43%. So all in all, a wonderful revenue report for the first reporting period of this year. Project status report. We've already heard just a little bit about the Health Center Parkway reconfiguration. Arnold and I, we joke, but we're about half-serious, that two weeks from now, we anticipate having a finished row. It was actually until the rain of last night, we thought we could get close this week, but certainly not going to make it. The planning process for the park continues to move forward. Mike and I, the first of next week, will be traveling to Dallas to work on a CO2 line that crosses, crosses the park. The, I think it's important to also note that Mike told me today, he and Mitch both, that it took them longer to get out of the parking garage at Oklahoma City Hall, Oklahoma City, City Hall, than it did to actually vote on de-anexing the land. So it was, it was a very short and unanimous vote to de-anex the land. The action you took tonight will allow the city council now to accept the petition from YMA, who owns the land, to annex it into the city limit. It will take effect, we'll have all of this done, and it'll take effect on August 22, I believe.
Sunday morning, if it's 22nd or 23rd.
Right. At 12:01 or 12 o'clock, something like that. So we're looking forward to accomplishing that. We had, I think, a good meeting this evening in preparation for another project on Main Street. We look forward to continued progress on that moving forward. I will, I think, end my report there and stand ready to answer any questions.
Gentlemen, questions? Ladies, questions? Seeing no questions, we'll move to Item 13, that's new business, any new business?
No, no, Mr. Grayson.
Discussion, Councilwoman Yanda?
Well, I want to thank Ray for his report, and also to thank all the members that serve on that board, and to Larry Mitchell and his staff for the great job that they're doing in having the vision for UConn and taking us forward and making this just a better place to live. Thank you.
Erlene?
I appreciate Ray, too. I didn't know he did all those good things. I've known him all these, known him all these years. He does a lot, and he's not here for me to pick on, anyway. Does a great job and very proud of the group. Thank you.
Mr. Russell?
I also would like to thank Chairman Wright for his presentation and the hard work, and just thank everybody for being here tonight.
Mr. McCarron?
Well, a couple of things, the main thing is, is I like, really grateful for Bill, and is, obviously, the polycart business is flourishing, and that means that we're finally getting rid of all of the old carts and moving forward. You know, most of you know maintenance is a big thing to me, so I'm really proud of that. I'm also pleased with Arnold and his group that the, I don't know, what do you call them, the potholers? I don't know. But the guys that run out and fix holes in the streets, I appreciate them because we made a couple of requests this, about a week ago, and they've already been out there and looked at them and everything else. And, you know, those kinds of things have really been good for a lot of my constituents, that they really feel like that, you know, the city responds to them now. Where in, you know, several years back, that wasn't always the case. And so I think it's a good time for all of us. Once again, I appreciate Ray, and it's an exciting time. There are many, many things going on in this town right now that just almost are mind-boggling, but I think it's the right thing, the right time, and we're doing well. With that, Mayor?
Just a couple of things. I think tonight's another one of those monumental nights that this council has experienced just recently. We, you know, Mike went down and helped us today make one step closer to a huge park that's going to have a huge, you know, the research tells us, a billion-dollar impact. And, you know, we met and had a nice presentation with a group of people that have a bright future about a new city hall and how that will help our community and benefit the citizens. Will open up some opportunity over on the eastern side of town. Those people, for years, have been saying, you know, bring us a grocery store. We'll take good care of it, and we'll support it. And that's factual, that's happened. It's been over there, and now another opportunity for that area of town. It just is an opportunity for our town to grow and expand. And tonight, we, I hope, let Mr. Bottom know that we're thrilled with the fact that he's here, and that I think that, Mr. Bottom, you have great vision, and that you bring us some great leadership. And you've helped assemble a great team with lots of department heads and employees and an A1 organization. I mean, you all present yourself well, you're punctual, you're on time, you're professional. We have a clean city. We have a street sweeper that works, thank you. So, but I think those things are important. I think we're very blessed to have you, but not only you, but also the team that you've put together. And together, you and your team, I think, are doing an excellent job. I think UConn, we've got a bright past, but I think we have a brilliant future. And I mean, it's a little intimidating. I probably sign more bonds than any mayor, and the more value of bonds, maybe not the number, but I mean, just, it's just an opportunity because of our revenue, because of a 12% growth, because of continued growth. That's what I hope people understand. Now's a unique time in UConn, that if we don't seize the moment and make these improvements and make these changes, this opportunity will never happen again. Because money's kind of like sand, and it just fill back in, and before you know it, it's paying salaries and plugging potholes, and those things are important. But right now is a great opportunity to help improve our infrastructure, take on some big challenges, to build a 250-some acre park, look and see if the new city hall is the right thing for the community. Those are challenging, scary, and wonderful things that are needed for this community to move forward into the next 50 years. So, and that's the thing, I think, when I talk to people in the community, it bothers them sometimes about how much money we spend. Well, the last time we spoke, what do we have, 5 million in our reserve?
Just in the general fund reserve is 5.3.
Okay, so we're, we have 5.3 million dollars in the bank for the people that are counting how much money we save. But the city operates on a zero-based budget. I mean, we're supposed to, and is that the right term?
Well, it's balanced.
Balanced.
It's got to be balanced.
Balanced budget. But I mean, we're not in the saving business, we're in the steward business. We're supposed to be good stewards of your money. And I appreciate the faith that you've put in us. It's a challenge, and we love the challenge, but it's a great opportunity. So as we go forward, building and constructing and spending millions of dollars, I asked for the new price on the new city hall tonight. The gentleman choked, and maybe it was his dinner, but he didn't give it to me. He said he wasn't ready to give it to me yet, but it's going to be a big number, and that's going to be a buzz around town. But it's not repairing potholes, it's looking for the future that's important right now. It's a great opportunity. But if you feel uncomfortable, if you feel uneasy, talk to your councilperson. Come talk to Grayson, come ask questions. We want to know your thoughts and your ideas. We want to move forward together to have the bright and brilliant future that each and every one of you all are entitled to, the people that live here. Thank you, Grayson. Thank you to the members that are here tonight that I can say thank you to. Mike and all you guys, I don't want to, but not list the people that aren't here. It's a great group that's together. Having been here for a long time now, it's awesome. I really appreciate the opportunity to work with you guys and serve as the mayor. With no other business before the council, the sermon is over.